Administrative Conference's Streetport City Council is now called to order. If you would, please stand. Councilwoman McCullough will lead us in an invitation, invocation, and then I will lead us in the pledge.
Yes, please bow your heads and repeat the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, Jordan Heaven, thou be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our day of bread, and forgive us our sins, as we forgive our trespasses against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. The Lord is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Please bow your head and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Ms. McCullough here. Mr. Everson?
Here.
Mr. Oliver Jenkins?
Present.
Mr. Corbin?
Here.
Mr. Webb? Mr. Shine?
Present.
Mr. Sam Jenkins?
Present.
Tomorrow, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the September 9th Administrative Conference and the September 10th City Council Meeting, and Amendment Number One to the September 10th City Council Meeting. Before we get into recognitions by council members, and Corporal Collins, I may need your help on this. I think we have two ABO appeals today. I'd like, because Mr. Webb could not be here today, I'd like to postpone Appeal Number Two, Mr. Russell Chabrair. Can we, can we come back in two weeks?
No.
Let's take it that. Oh. Hang on one second. The information I received is that you did not feel good today, that you had some medical problems, and wanted to put this off.
I'm going to try to make it, but if I don't, I'm not going to do it later on. But you know, I left, I left my IV because of my card. I need that card, because otherwise I can work.
I'm not sure we're picking that up.
Well, and Councilman Webb's not here either, so.
Mr. Chairman, express rate grocery, I think that's District G. Yeah. He may live in Councilman Webb's district, but I think this store is actually District G.
Okay. Well, then, we'll hear that today, then.
Yeah. Have a seat. We'll, we'll, we'll be here.
At this point, does any council member have any awards, recognitions, or distinguished guests?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to extend congratulations to a young man who received an award Friday night at the NAACP banquet. He's an outstanding public servant, and has a legacy here that everyone in the community recognized and approved of. And I'm talking about none other than Honorable Councilman Joe Shine from District G.
Oliver Jenkins.
I mean, I think, no.
Damn. You didn't even one guy have him, and let me know he was talking about me.
I didn't know either, Councilman Shine.
All right. I got to take him to lunch, but Oliver told me a young man.
Well, he did. He, he received the Gary Huckabee Award. And I think that's a very coveted award coming from a very renowned organization here in our city. So, congratulations, Councilman Shine.
Thank you.
I just like that. I'm sorry I wasn't invited. I mean, had I known that was in the offering, I'd have stopped by myself and supported Councilman Shine, had I been given the opportunity.
Damn, I think he's just overlooking me, that's why.
I mean, I don't understand how I just find out about this on a Monday.
He's just overlooking me, yeah. Yeah. All right. Sam, thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Any other recognitions? If not, Mr. Sibley, turn it over to you for recognitions and city business.
None at this time, Mr. Chairman, anticipating the mayor's arrival. He may have some when he arrives.
Okay, great. At this point, does any council member have any questions or concern relative to property standards?
Is Ms.?
I, I have one.
Ms. Farnell is here.
Ms. Farnell?
Yeah, she was here. Oh.
Oh, yeah. She's always in matters.
Councilman Shine?
Uh, you've been gone so long, I was just wondering if you brought us anything back.
Me? I'm here.
Yeah. Oh. I don't know, maybe you brought us a little chocolate candy or something.
No, sir. I'm, I think I may have eaten that.
Well, I mean, that's all I am, then. Yeah, that's all. Rose and I, Rose and I was talking about.
She said she needed her 5% back to, I mean, Councilman Shine.
Councilman Sam Jenkins.
She needed her 5% back when we were doing the budget, so I just wanted to kind of throw that at the council since she's up here.
I thought she spent that on her vacation there. Damn.
I don't think she would, though.
She could have that, huh, damn.
I, I don't think she would ask her.
Okay. Okay.
Ms. Farnell, and we've had some ongoing discussions about Ms. Kerzie.
Yes, sir.
Can we please find out what's going on with her? She calls me every week, and I'm not real certain.
I, I spoke to her on, I spoke to her on Thursday. We had a long conversation, and I can speak to you after council meeting if you would like. Yes, sir, and I can give you full information on that.
All right.
But we have spoken, yes, sir.
Oh, well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Farnell. Tomorrow, we will have a master plan committee report, and tomorrow, there is also a public hearing. Mr. Thompson, would you read the public hearing notification?
Public hearing ordinance number 104 of 2013. It's a proposed annexation tag number 12-09. It will enlarge the limits of the boundaries of the City of Streetport. It's an 83.83 acre tract of land located east of Wallace Lake Road and north of Southern Trace Parkway located in Section 30 Township 16 North Range 13 West Cattle Parish, Louisiana.
Mr. Chairman, could I, Mr. Thompson, do we still have to have our annexation cleared through the Justice Department?
I don't.
I know we used to.
Mr. Chairman, that's probably a good question due to the Supreme Court case. I wonder if Scott has really researched that, but there, there might be.
I know. Oliver, we used to have to do that. We used to have to have all annexations, used to have to be cleared through the Justice Department before they would become.
We'll, we'll get you a better answer on that.
Please. I'm, I'm an old, Oliver and I are federal people, so we want to make sure we got all eyes and crossed all keys.
Well, Councilman Shine.
Instead of ward, Councilman Shine.
That's what, that's what it is.
Well, I would say you're wise behind, beyond your years, but I'm not trying, we could quite go that far at that level, but.
There you go. Sam, you see that?
I see.
You gave a good compliment when Oliver comes in. Okay.
Mr. Sibley, do we have any legislation to be added?
Yes, we do, Mr. Chairman, and I'd refer to Mr. Thompson on it.
We have several items, Mr. Chairman. One is Ordinance 112. It's an ordinance to repeal. Ordinance number 11 of 1972 was created a four-way intersection at Crestwell Avenue and Southfield Road, and it enacts a two-way stop intersection. I think that's something Mr. Oliver Jenkins has been working on. Another is the vetoed ordinance number 97. I sent you an email. What essentially happened was the clerk of council, whoever that happened, failed to read.
I think you were on vacation that week.
Failed to read the amendment to ordinance number 97, and the council adopted it without the amendment. The amendment was crucial, and so the administration, they've come back, and they have a new ordinance, 105, I believe it is, that's on the agenda, that incorporates everything that was in the ordinance and the amendment. So, we would ask that there would be a vote, a motion tomorrow to, to adopt, re-adopt the ordinance, but that there would be a unanimous no vote to uphold the veto of the mayor. And we have also a resolution authorizing the mayor to make application with the Louisiana Commission on Law Enforcement through the Northwest Louisiana Enforcement Planning Agency for a multi-jurisdictional Narcotics Task Force grant. And we also just received a resolution for a support grant concerning the adoption of a, something entitled six. But anyway, we have.
You see, you just received it?
Yes.
Who brought it down?
Terry.
Oh.
But anyway, those are the items we'll ask you to add to the agenda tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. The only request to speak for public comments that I have is related to an ABO appeal, so we will hear that a little bit later. Mr. Sibley, confirmations and appointments?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Tomorrow, we'll ask that the council approve one appointment to the Streetport Housing Authority, Mr. John Hubbard. Mr. Hubbard will be here tomorrow, but I believe many of the council members are familiar, know Mr. Hubbard very well. On the Streetport Municipal Fire and Police Civil Service Board, there are two reappointments, Mr. Timothy Jones, Reverend Timothy Jones, and Mr. Lord Thompson. There's a new appointment, Dr. Eileen Velez, who we will ask that the council approve those appointments on tomorrow. And as you're aware, the council did approve the appointments of the Historic Preservation Board. However, we needed to establish staggered terms for those members. What you see before you is basically the recommendation of the mayor based upon discussions within the committee themselves and decisions and recommendations that they made. So, we'll ask tomorrow that the council approve these terms for those members of the Historic Preservation Board.
Now, damn, in fact, the Reverend Dr. Timothy.
That's the Reverend Dr. Timothy Jones.
Okay. We got, we got Sam here, and you know how ministers and minister songs about that title.
Those titles are important.
Yeah.
Mr. Sibley, Ms. Henderson, that's for a two-year term, and Mr. Billy Wayne, that's for a one-year term.
That's correct.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sibley. I believe we have no items under consent agenda for introduction or adoption. Can we continue to regular agenda legislation?
Section A is resolutions on second reading and final passage or which will require only one reading. Number 159 authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement with Eric Cottrell and Louis Wallace to permit commercial turtle trapping on Cross Lake. This matter was previously postponed. There's one amendment attached, as well as a copy of the contract. Resolution 167 authorizes the mayor to accept a FY 2012 Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program, Fire Prevention and Safety Grant, and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. Resolution 169 suspends the effects of certain provisions of Chapter 10 relative to alcoholic beverages relative to dispensing, sale, and/or consumption of low alcoholic content beverages for the 10th Annual Highland Jazz and Blues Festival located at 600 Columbia Street. Resolution 170 suspends certain provisions of Chapter 10 relative to alcoholic beverages on October 26, 2013, relative to dispensing, sale, and/or consumption of alcoholic beverages at 2459 East 70th Street for the Camp Tiger Chili Cook-Off. Number 171 accepts dedication for Providence Place Boulevard, Hollybrook Drive, Woodbury Avenue, and AEP Swept Co. Servitude in Providence Phase 2, Unit D. Resolution 172 accepts dedication for Woodson Lane, Winged Elm Drive, Snapdragon Lane, and Fair Woods Drive in Providence Phase 2, Unit C. Number 173 accepts dedication for Savannah Drive and Community Trust Bank Commercial Subdivision. Number 174 declares the city's interest in certain adjudicated properties as surplus and otherwise provides with respect thereto. Number 175, a resolution to adopt October 2013 as Housing America Month, and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. And number 176 authorizes the mayor to dedicate Mylum Street between Norma Avenue and Hearn Avenue in honor of the late Reverend C.C. McLean, Sr.
Any questions?
Yes.
Councilman Shine?
I have been informed that 159 on tomorrow will be a goal. Right, dude?
Yes.
And that means that it won't be long, we'll be able to go to the restaurant here in Streetport and get some turtle soup.
Mr. Shine, they serve turtle soup with sherry. You know that, right?
Uh-uh. Nah. Don't spoil it for me now.
Don't have it on Sunday, you're okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Don't spoil it for me.
We do have a representative from SBD who's, for me, with those rules and regulations regarding turtle trafficking with the council, like to ask any questions or need any information today, or ask that he come back tomorrow. What's the pleasure of the council?
I'm, I'm fine with it.
Is, is the person here today?
Yes, sir.
Let's get a little over.
Yeah, I like to have a little idea. They're not, they're not doing.
Certainly don't want him to have to come back tomorrow.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
We're not doing anything cruel to these turtles.
I'm just ready to have a little turtle soup.
I hear you. That sounds cruel.
I can't even carry with it yet.
I just want an overview of what.
This is news for me, too. These guys come off two months ago.
If you would, just move over to the podium.
These guys come to office.
Give us an overview of what this involves and how they'll be trapping turtles.
These guys come to office a few months ago, wanting to trap turtles. I think they've got a hatchery down south somewhere, so they can raise them, raise their eggs, for some reason. Not sure what they're going to do with the eggs, but I just had a few guidelines. I want to make sure the traps are going to be in places where people can't get harmed or ski over them, and safe spots, and they got to be exposed and marked, so we know where they're at. And one of, I really want one of us home with them every time they check them, because I want to make sure they're pulling just turtles up only. Any fish, any kind of alligator, they have to let go right there on the spot. And, um, any other question? Like, we get, we come on work at 7:00 in the morning, get off at 9:00 at night, and I kind of want to keep it in that timeframe when they come out. And I know they want to push later or earlier. We can't, we can't do that, because they ain't going to pay us overtime to come out there and do all that for them.
I have one question. Do we have many turtles out there? You don't really know.
I see them get ran over by cars here and there, but there ain't so many that you see them everywhere swimming around. I'm sure there's a lot. These are the first guys ever coming to try to trap them. I never heard that before here, because it's no trapping allowed on Cross Lake, unless y'all permit it.
And let's be sure to get your name and, and position.
Sergeant Mike Masuso, Cross Lake Patrol, Streetport Police Department.
Thanks, sir.
That's the reason we have to approve this, there's no trapping allowed.
Right. There's none whatsoever out here.
Okay.
That's all new, new stuff. We're learning every day on it.
Thank you, Sergeant.
All right.
Sounds good. Thanks, sir.
Tomorrow, same time.
Same thing. Just in case. Just in case, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, go ahead, Bill.
Section B, there are no resolutions for introduction under Section C, introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to October 8, 2013. Number 105, amends the 2013 Capital Improvements Budget, this is regarding water and sewer. This is the ordinance that Mr. Thompson referenced a little bit earlier in place of ordinance 97. Number 106, amends the 2013 General Fund Budget. This is some improvements in equipment, believe within SPAR, I'm sorry, this is within the city attorney's office, to get some computer equipment. Number 107, amends the 2013 Grants Special Revenue Fund Budget. Number 108, authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement granting a utility servitude to AEP Swept Co. at Kirby's Park. This is to generate power to the pro shop there at the course. Number 109 is zoning matter C6413. It's an ordinance amending Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Streetport Zoning Ordinance by rezoning property located east of Church Street, beginning 300 feet east of Church Street from Grantham to 241 feet south of Martin Avenue extending east Streetport, Cattle Parish, Louisiana. Change from R1H Urban One Family Residence District to R1HE Urban One Family Residence Extended Use District, limited to the stockpile of dirt and broken concrete materials and sanitary sewer flow equalization ponds for the city-owned operation. This is the Church Street property that we talked about earlier, that the city actually owns in that area. Number 110 is zoning matter C6813. It's an ordinance amending Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Streetport Zoning Ordinance by rezoning property located on the southwest corner of East Kings Highway and Jackson Square Boulevard. Change from R3 Urban Multiple Family Residence District to B2 Neighborhood Business District. Number 111 is zoning matter C6913. It's an ordinance amending Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Streetport by rezoning property located on the west side of Monk House Drive, 1,200 feet north of Westwood Park Drive. Change from R1D Urban One Family Residence District to B3 Community Business District.
Any questions? Not Mr. Sibley? About what we go with the ordinance is on second reading and final passage?
And we have two there, Mr. Chairman. Number 103 amends the 2013 Capital Improvements Budget, and number 104 is the annexation tag number 12-09. It enlarges the limits and boundaries of the City of Streetport and 83.83 acre tract of land located east of Wallace Lake Road and north of Southern Trace Parkway located in Section 30 Township 16 Range 13 West Cattle Parish, Louisiana. There's a map attached as a public hearing set for tomorrow.
Any questions?
Only one. Mr. Sibley, I would hope that you and you would look into that to see.
The preclearances?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Preclearance. Thank you very much.
I know we've probably gone over this, but the one about the GOB projects under SPAR, so is that a function of just that some either came in over budget or under budget?
The bulk of it was premium money is on the initial sale. If I'm not, and Shelley, make sure I'm not, that's what we're talking about, the Proposition Two amendments. We actually generated more revenue.
Than we envisioned.
Exactly.
And so, as a function of that, this is how we're allocating that additional?
Yes, sir. If you recall, y'all did one out of Proposition One for water and sewer previously. This one is out of Proposition Two, and then we're also going to bring forward a third after the mayor has a chance to go with you guys, which will cover streets. So, each proposition had premium funds, and we're coming to you to go ahead and ask you to allow us to expend those, those, those funds. They're all being spent on bond projects, and that's one of the limitations of use of those funds.
Okay.
Mr. Thompson, is there any table legislation?
I'm not aware of any, Mr. Chairman. Unless some member.
We're not aware of any. Chairman? Okay. When did we ever decide about ordinance 25? We're going to leave that out there a little while more, the turn lanes?
Yeah, you know, I was just thinking of that the other day. I talked to, I was wanting to leave it out there, because there were still some people who were interested in continuing the discussion, but I contacted them, and I think we can take that off. There may be somebody else who wants to bring it back up at some point, but I think they generally understand why the, that there was a challenge to that, and that any, any action we actually took would probably make the situation worse, according to all of the, the studies that were done. And so, once I had a chance to sort of express that to all the people, they, they generally get it. So, I think we can remove that if y'all are interested in doing that.
What I'd like to do is if, if any council member has something out here that's not being worked through committee right now, as we get closer to the end of the year, I'd like to see if we can get some of these either removed or, or take some action on them. I believe that brings us to property standards appeals. Ms. Farnell?
By the way, in your last case, the Skeeta Resolution.
Yeah.
You know, I'm not sure what, pretty sure you could probably take that one off, off the table legislation, but I'm.
I think we can replace that down the road.
Yeah.
You want to consider one and two for removal tomorrow?
But that money in.
I have three cases here. The first case is with Councilman Oliver Jenkins. It's at 140 Pennsylvania Street. The owners are not, they are not present here today. However, they have only just a small portion on the east side to complete, as you can see the pictures of the structure. They've done a lot of work to it. I'm going to ask a 45 days for them to finish that one section of it. But if you notice the front and side, it looks good.
Second. Motion by Councilman Oliver Jenkins, second by the vice chair for 45-day extension.
Working on the date over there?
Searching that calendar. All right, listen. That is 6S, 1X.
That would be, I'm sorry, October 22nd.
I'm going to guess October 22nd is 30 days, so I think you got to go to the next meeting.
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry. The next meeting is November, November 12, November 11. November 11. Thank you very kindly. Our next case is in Councilman Sam Jenkins' area, 2837 Logan Street. This is Mrs. Carolyn Wilson. There has not been any work done to the structure since the last meeting. The owner was here and was trying to get financing for the structure. She's here, and I'm going to ask her to come up, Mr. Jenkins.
Well, we're at this point, I saw where my, the family was experiencing hardship and was not able to come up with the funding. I applied with my bank for a home equity loan in my residence in Queensborough, and I own, I thought there was an application, a copy of it in here. I talked to my bank officer up until the point I came in this evening to get some type of acknowledgement as to the point of the decision-making. They said that they hadn't received anything yet. Um, when I talked to the bank.
You're working on, you're working on your funding?
Yes, sir.
Now, I was over there, not this past Saturday, I think it was the Saturday before. I saw someone over there working, I was over there Saturday morning.
Cutting the property and cutting down the, the trees that had, they were outgrown and was put on the front. A portion of it had, a great deal had been picked up. There's only a smaller amount left there to be picked.
How, how much longer do you think you need to try to finance some of that to fund?
Uh, this is my first time going through this, Councilman. I have been calling on several, several times, and they said they had to wait until the decision was made. And I also talked to the bank manager to see if they could just send them acknowledgement letters to the effect of date that I applied, which was the 30th of August. They said they should be hearing something any time now, but she had to get approval from the person up from her, because that was the bank records, before they could release as such, so I'm between a rock and a hard spot. I don't know.
Let's give her, give some additional time?
Seven.
What kind of additional time could, could we give her? I, I've been going by there from time to time, and I've seen somebody that more often than not doing something, like you all trying to get something done over there.
Because of the fact that she has applied for funding, and I understand the details of everything that has to be done, I'm willing to give her 90 days.
So moved for 90 days.
Second by Councilman Sam Jenkins, second by the vice chair for 90 days.
Okay. Yeah, I was going to ask you, right? We did pick up all the trees and limbs and stuff that was down in front, all that's been picked up.
They did that. They did do that.
I don't want to get.
That is 6S, 1 absent.
The 90 days will be December 9.
What?
December 9.
It's got to be the second.
November.
It's January. Put it in the letter. Is it January?
I think it's going to be January.
I'm going to guess it's the second meeting in December, but that's.
I think it's going to be.
That's three months from now.
What's, what's the, what's the date of the second meeting in December?
Deduct, deduct.
What is that date?
The second meeting in December.
Get out, been around.
23rd?
No, it's the 16th.
Second meeting in December?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, we're going to meet early, huh? 16?
Yeah.
Oh, the second meeting. Second meeting. The second meeting is the 23rd.
Okay. Is that our 23rd? Okay.
That's fine. Okay, so that's our 90 days.
Thank you. Our next case is still in your district, Mr. Jenkins, thirty fifteen Catherine Street. The owner is present. He has made a substantial amount of work. He still has a lot more to do. He is here today. I'm willing to give him an additional sixty days to complete. I have asked that he needs to maintain the grass because it needs cutting front and back. You wish to have him say anything?
Yes, come on up. I just want to make sure that you understand you need to maintain the grass on the front and back.
Yeah, I understand that part right there. Y'all, do y'all got them pictures up there, sir?
Well, you got sixty days. I mean, we finna give you sixty more days to work on it.
Yes, sir.
So move for sixty days.
Second by Councilman Sam Jenkins, second by the vice chair for sixty days. Six yes, one absent.
Okay, I'll talk to you.
Is the second four, has that been there?
Whatever, sixty.
I just wanted to be sure it was me.
Yeah.
That'll be the.
I just see a lot of particle board siding.
About the twenty-fifth.
I just didn't, I didn't know they were.
It's going to be the twenty-fifth of November. Those are all the cases that I have for today.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Farnell. We appreciate it.
Welcome back.
Before she sits down, may I ask, may I make an inquiry to her first?
You may.
Mr. Sibley, you know, we met with Mr. Jan Dexter and what's that, Sarah Kane?
On the abandonment, though.
Right, and I know, of course, we were going to do some property standards. According to Mr. Dexter, this week, nothing has been done. You know.
I will find out by tomorrow. I recall from the meeting, it was going to be an issue whether or not they'd be willing to abandon, yeah, and I think it was more of a public works issue, but let me get the stand and get an update for you.
So Stan is familiar with the issue with Mr. Jan Dexter and the removal of the trees? Right, he called this week, and he, you know, I gave you a couple of recordings that he said before, and it's pretty much the same thing.
Let me get an update for you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if we may, you know, one of the items that's going to be added is the Sportran issue with the Title VI. We do have representatives from Sportran here. If it's okay, I'd like to, if you would allow them to come forward and just kind of give you some background on it. I know one of the major issues was the timing on it, and the cause of Sportran is on the federal fiscal year, October one is rolling up, but Vaughn and Mr. Washington, if you would, update the council on that.
I might, I might have about six, seven, eight, nine, ten, twelve questions from this lady. Whenever she finishes.
Absolutely, Councilman Jenkins. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Vaughn Jennings, the Public Affairs Manager for Sportran as well as a compliance officer, and this is Mr. De Niro Washington. He's our general manager. What you have before you is a Title VI program that comes from the U.S. Department of Transportation through FTA, and every three years, you're required to update this program, which states that you will not discriminate against anyone based on race, ethnicity, or national origin. It pertains to, obviously, the transportation services, how we administer that agency, and how we communicate with the public about our transportation program. This is due to the FTA office sixty days prior to the program expiring, so we need to submit it to them by October one, which was the need to get it to you all today. It is a new requirement to have a resolution from your board that wasn't a requirement in the past. There are also some other components that pertain to limited English proficiency. So we've covered all of those issues. It includes assurances, and it provides the riders and the residents, as well as yourself, the assurance of knowing that there will be no discrimination, and that there is a policy and a procedure in the event that any individual feels that they have a complaint to make, there is a process to follow to do that.
Just one observation, Oliver, I do want you to know that Vaughn's mother and myself work together in Kettle Parish.
Yes, they did.
I think you may be showing your age.
What's my mom, what's me?
A simple, a friend of the family is maybe more appropriate than for us to go down this road of generational shit.
I thought you was going to say congratulations, not you.
You win that award, look what's that?
This will be up for tomorrow, is that right?
Yeah.
Tomorrow, okay. You covered that quite well, Ms. Jennings.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Before you go, the gentleman, tell us your name and title.
My name's De Niro Washington. I'm the general manager for Sportran.
Okay, congratulations.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll note for the record that the city itself also has to do a Title VI report every year, and Ms. Angelita Jackson, our Human Resource Director, is the point person for that. We've done ours, but just, it's really just because they're a separate entity, they're doing it through the Federal Transit Authority. We have to do ours through LADOTD, but basically the same thing.
That brings us to ABO appeals. I think you'll see two on the agenda. One is postponed until October seventh.
If you turn to tab number one, ABO card appeal. Russell's is first, I don't know how to pronounce his last name, I apologize for that. I mean, he's actually denied for two different reasons. First is a false statement in his application, a suppression of fact. The second one is he's convicted of a felony, is currently on probation. Eight twenty-six, two thousand thirteen, he was convicted of middle-grade theft in Boja Parish. Five-eight of two thousand twelve, he has underage alcohol sales here in Shreveport, and also interference of a public official. If you look at his application, which is, actually, you go to the third page, under misdemeanor convictions or felony convictions, that's actually blank on there. And if you go to the page after that, in a statement of clarification, it says, and he has, or circled, "I have never been convicted of criminal offense," and also he has circled, "I am not on probation or parole," which he is on probation at this time. Also, there was a question about the place of birth. I contacted Immigration, and they stated that Tampa, Florida was not actually his place of birth. It was actually out of country. So there's just some inconsistencies here, some false statements. He just does not meet the qualifications due to the felony, still be on probation, plus all the false statements he made.
I have, I'm looking at personal information where it says race. I wonder if this is a misleading statement. He has white chick. Is that, now I'm trying to figure out, is that you or you? Oh, is it, oh. You don't have a, maybe I'm wrong, but he didn't look Caucasian to me.
Is he a citizen? Is he a U.S. citizen or not?
According to Immigration, he was not born in U.S., and it states here he was, so I'd like to get clarification on that one.
Hold it. Hold it, man, you don't get a chance to talk.
If you look on here where it says place of birth, it says Tampa, Florida, and that's not what Immigration said, so another falsification on that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Oliver, it looked like white would be a falsification.
Mr. Setser, you had signed up to speak. Would you like to make a comment?
The only comment would be that Russell Share, be a silent, had asked me to speak for him concerning this appeal. He's the owner of the property there at Express Grocery for at least five years in managing properties other than that one in that capacity. I understand he made a mistake. He went to prison for that. He's out on probation, and he needs to work. That was the reason for the appeal, for the permanent ABO card.
Man?
The underage sale, is that the, is that the only alcohol-related offense?
Yeah.
The underage sale on May the eighth, twenty-twelve?
That's what I understand.
Call.
Depends on which neighborhood you're in.
There you go.
There's another pending underage sale. There's actually, he was arrested for no ABO permit, no ABO card, and underage sales, and he failed to go to court on one of those, issued a bench warrant. I guess they picked him up, so he has not been on the court for that one yet.
Have we confirmed that he owns, that he owns his business? Do we have any confirmation?
I'm still trying to clarify that, because he told me he was a business owner at first. It was a family business, which, if that's the case, we're going to have to go after revocation because of being convicted felony, cannot own an alcohol business, so I'm still researching that. But at first, he told me he was partial owner, then he told me he wasn't, so there's just a lot of inconsistencies here.
Let me ask one quick question to the gentleman speaking right there. What is your role in this?
I'm just a friend. I'm, I've known Russell for nine months or so. While he was in prison, I was, I'm a religious volunteer, and I studied the Bible with Russell for a good bit of the time that he was in prison.
I understand.
And that's my, that's my concern.
I didn't know if you were legal representation.
Oh, no.
Does he want, do you want to speak?
See, first of all, I would like to tell that all this business belongs to my family. So I work for them, you know, his family business, they need me, and I, I need job, because, you know, I've been long, I did twenty-two months, I just got out. I don't know all this stuff, you know, I, I, I'm from Florida. I have business over there, my family, they got business too. But the issue is, he didn't understand, I didn't understand, you know, that I write it, I didn't write no policy statement. I didn't know that how, what is the procedure. I didn't know the procedure. I made it, I write it down in the paperwork, what I know, that's what I write. Now, the thing is, this is my, all my life, that's what I did, you know, store business, that's my living. Now, if he take the car, or, you know, if I lose the car, I have nowhere else to go, get a job or do something, you know. I got to pay my bills, I got to run my family, you know, take care of everything. So, you know, I mean.
Does anyone else at this location have, have an ABO card that could sell alcohol?
Yeah, I mean, right now, the problem is, you know, I got to have ABO card, otherwise I can't run the business. Any business I go, I got to have it. It doesn't matter, I'm in the register or in the office, because ABO, these people going to come, they on verification, you know?
Yeah.
And I have to do my living, you know?
I'm, I'm still concerned about the citizenship issue. When can we get some more information on that?
Citizenship?
Yeah, the citizenship issue. When can we get some more information on that? Counselors, do you know if that's something, we can get some more information on as to whether or not he's actually a U.S. citizen or not?
If he just wants an ABO card, the question is not whether he's a U.S. citizen, you don't have to be a U.S. citizen to be in, have an ABO card. What I did is verify that he was authorized to be in the United States, which he is. It's just the problem is, he said he was born in Tampa, but Immigration is saying something different, you know, and I just don't understand why there's so many inconsistencies here. Also, from his country he came from, we also did a background check there, which is pretty extensive there also.
Why is the country he came from?
And the, the ownership of the business, that's another question still in my mind. He's saying that his parents own the business and not.
I'm still trying to clarify who's the owner, because he's saying he's running the business. If he's running the business, that's acting as a manager, which if he's a manager, he has to meet the same qualifications as the owner, and that's not to be a convicted felon. So the more I'm researching, since I was gone for last week, didn't have a lot of time to research this, but the more I'm researching, this comes up with a lot more problems.
Where is his country of origin?
India.
India? Was that what it said, India?
Yeah, Bangladesh.
Oh, Bangladesh.
That's where he was born, but on his application, it says Tampa, Florida, so.
When I apply for my ring, got everything, the process, I didn't understand that, what he's trying to tell. I'm legally residing in this country, I have legal paperwork, but I don't understand what he's got to do with it, you know? I don't understand that part, because, you know, I didn't understand that point of view, that what he's trying to tell. You know, my paperwork down in Florida, that's what I write it down in Florida, you know?
You got, let me just say, you got the fact that he, let me just get something straight in my, the fact that he's a convicted felon, that doesn't stop him from having an ABO card either, right? You got to hold on one second here, one minute here. That doesn't stop him from having an ABO card either, does it? If he's a convicted felon, he can't have an ABO card either?
It's not the fact he's a convicted felon, he's still on probation, and when you're on probation from a felony, then he's not allowed to have an ABO card. He's on a two-year probation till two thousand fifteen. He was just convicted last month or month before.
Okay, August twenty-sixth.
Yeah, August twenty-sixth. And that's two years.
There are other legal issues pending right now, right?
Yes.
There are additional?
Maybe difficult to move forward with it. Okay, now, I would like to ask you one more question about my case, that he's telling that I'm a felony felon. This is my first time, it was the issue, family issue, that I had a problem with my cousin, I restored with him, and he tell I took the money, and he put a charge on me. That's why I detour it two months on the case.
Do you have another, do you have another charge that's?
No, I have no penalty case, I don't have nothing right now. So, you know, that was a misunderstanding probably, because my name, they put upside down. Russell's first name, Sharier Lars, and then another place, Sharier first, Russell Lars. So I don't have, I went, that's why, when I got out from the Boja Parish, they bring the Shreveport because of that, and when they see that two parts, two different names, it's same few person, two different names. I don't have penalty case, you can check it out on that too.
Just for some clarification, on eight twenty-seven thirteen, I looked at his criminal history, showed he was arrested on three bench warrants, one selling with no permit, one no ABO card, and the other one selling to a minor. That was on eight twenty-seven, two thousand thirteen. It doesn't show disposition yet, so they're still pending.
I have the paperwork, disposition paperwork with me.
On the charges that he's talking about? Can you bring it up here? I need to see. Let's get the file cabinet back there. This is not giving us any information on the new charges that he's talking about.
August twenty-seventh. The lawyer, he's from the D. O. P. S., from the public defender office?
These are the old ones.
Yeah, but it's running one parent, everything.
Right, but he's got some ones, he's saying you arrested on, they haven't been resolved.
August twenty-seventh, is that what that says, Sam?
Yeah, these are the ones for, no, it's not the August twenty-sixth. These are the ones in twenty-twelve, the two in twenty-twelve.
We're talking August twenty-seventh, two thousand thirteen.
It's running one parent, they still they told me. In the court, when I went, the judge said everything running one parent. So, you know, I have no penalty charges.
Okay. What I'm going to do, I'd like to get some more clarification on the pending charges. We're going to continue this, I want to move to continue it till the next meeting. Let's get some clarification on the pending charges and the ownership of the business. That's what I like to try to get straight in my mind. A person could work, I want him to work. I know we all make mistakes, but if you kind of.
You know, I made mistakes in my time, you know?
No, no, what I'm saying, if you, if you're disqualified in some kind of way, we can't get around it, then our hands are going to be tied. So I want to make a motion to continue it for, until the next meeting, in case we can get some clarification on the ownership of the business and clarification on those charges, pending charges that you're talking about. I think it'd help my deliberation a little bit. Okay? These are, so move to continue till the next meeting.
Motion by Councilman Sam Jenkins.
Second.
Second by the vice chair. Any discussion? Not please vote. That is six yes, one absent.
You need, you need to back to the next meeting.
Are there? See, the mayor has stealthily snuck in on us. Mr. Mayor, do you have any comments?
None at this time, Mr. Chairman. You all are moving along quite well.
The other, the other appeal, I thought it was appeal for Trump again.
October 7.
They said they couldn't come today, so we put it off until.
Mr. Chairman?
Mayor Glover.
With regard to the appointees, I'm not sure if that was you representing, Arden?
No, sorry, he was talking to another.
Okay, we do have one that, if the council will still be in session around 4:30 or so arriving. Dr. Valdez, unfortunately, in the 3 o'clock hour, has that interesting duty of picking up the children from school, and so was not able to be here during that timeframe, but was targeting about 4:30 or so, but don't know if we'll still be in. But if she, if we are, would love to have the opportunity to be able to bring her up and introduce it that time.
Great. Are there any reports from officers, boards, or committees? Mr. Thompson?
The chairman, Mr. Corbin, has scheduled an executive session for tomorrow, immediately after the regular council meeting concerning Urban Housing of America Inc., versus the City of Shreveport, and the Metropolitan Planning Commission of Caddo Parish, Shreveport-Caddo Parish. So that will be immediately after the council.
As in addition to this clerk's report?
We have an overview of the symphony on Saturday, which I'm quite sure you were in attendance.
I was in attendance. It was a great event. I looked for you.
You didn't make anything this.
I had some other, some family problems, yeah. So it was good.
It was a great event.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Just a quick reminder, other than the executive session tomorrow, I know Jackie has sent out some emails. We'll have a list at your stations tomorrow. Be sure that you've marked your calendar for Saturday, October 9, and Saturday, I'm sorry, Saturday, November 9, and Saturday, November 16, the budget meetings from 8:30 to about 3 o'clock in the afternoon. If there's nothing else, we adjourned until tomorrow.
Stan?
I guess I'll have to get my tickets away to the ground.